Session Monday, April 1st, 2013. This is April the first and it's not April Fool's Day. This is just a meeting that we were happy that everybody did show up and the people in the audience also. So with that, I ask that we stand now and give the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Announcements, I don't have anything at this time, so what we'll do is open with discussion, regional traffic management discussion. I'll turn this portion over to our city manager, Bill Vida.
Thank you, your honor. Good morning, I'm Bill Vida. Let me take care of a few housekeeping things first. This is a work session for us. In the City of Marquette, that means that whatever happens today, there won't be a vote of the board, there won't be any specific action taken, but we recognize there might be quorum from other bodies. And so I'd like to start on this side of the table, if you have quorum, and if you've noticed, this is an open meeting, if you'd like to go through your procedures for starting the meeting and recording your attendance, we'll be in there.
I think we've posted as a...
Yep.
In that case, we do have to open the meeting. Since we don't have a clerk here today, I'll call the meeting to order at the vado two, I guess. No members present, trustee LaRue.
Here.
Trustee Durant.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Treasurer Johnson.
Here.
Supervisor Leamont is here. That's it.
Do we have quorum on any other bodies here? Could I ask then, maybe that would just go around for the victories, so...
Bill Carlson, supervisor of the House.
Daryl Sumner, chairman of County Road Commission.
Joe Valentin, Marquette County Road Commission.
Jim Iwaniki, manager of Road Commission.
Deb Palomarque, County Board.
Scott Irish, Marquette County Administrator.
For accepting, county board.
Are there any people here representing any other jurisdictions or bodies in the back of the crowd that would like to make their presence known?
Arquisha, Deanna Hemlon, Florida Michigan University.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming. We're looking forward today to a robust discussion, and I wanted to just provide a little bit of an overview of the format and hopefully what the outcome will be today, and then we'll turn it back over to the boards for the discussion today. What we're hoping to do today is really take this opportunity to sit down and discuss how we can work together to find a solution here. Since the CR-595 district's discussion, that really kind of resets a lot of the planning that's been going on underway for the last seven or eight years. And we're hoping now as a group, if you take a look back at all of the mining reporting, all of the media reporting, all of the minutes, you can see practically every year for the last seven years, we've gotten together as a body trying to discuss this problem and find ways to solve it. And it looks like we get an opportunity again today to do that, but hopefully in a way now that's going to be informed a little bit differently, as you get closer to the moments that you anticipate, it sometimes changes the perspective. And if this were just about sitting down with the same people and the same voices and the same answers and the same kind of discussion that we had before, it would be probably foolish to discuss a different answer. But I don't think that's what's going to happen all that way. But let me offer, from an administrative standpoint, we have coffee, we have food, we have vouchers. If you head out here in the hall, you should be able to find them, and it's a work session, you should feel free to stand up and take care of whatever your desire might be. The format today is going to be Randy and I, and I thank my partner Randy for helping facilitate this. This is really, from the standpoint of a dialogue today, more about the elected leadership, more about policy, a lot less about the administrative issues. And so what we'd like to do is, once the discussion gets going, we'll serve as your facilitators for this meeting to help keep the dialogue going forward. The whiteboards here will capture ideas or thoughts if they want to make sure absolutely clear, and we'll call them just sandboxes, so we'll add things if people call us out or if we hear them, to make sure we're tracking actions and help keep the meeting going forward. So with that said, are there any questions maybe before we jump in? No? Yeah? Thank you, your honor. Let me turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I had failed at beginning of meeting, just to say that I did take roll call. All city commissioners are present, and so one of the things I believe that we want to do is expose all the different options that are up on the map. I don't know how you want to start this, if you want to start it with discussion. Randy, if you wanted to take the floor and discuss anything that's on your mind, thoughts or concerns?
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, you're our Marquette Township manager, and as Bill mentioned, our function here today is basically to staff you. We have two governing bodies that are represented by forums here, so you run the show. We're simply here to assist you in any way that we can up here at the front. We're familiar with the maps, we're familiar, as Joe mentioned, we have a couple of sheets here to put down your ideas, but this is your meeting, and I'm here to answer questions. We do have our township planner here in the audience with us. I see the city planner is also here in the audience in case there are any longer-term issues, but my role here is to listen to what you folks want. With that, I'll turn it back to the two bodies that have quorum here.
Okay, thank you. And with that, over to the county board, if anybody wanted to address anything, and/or the Marquette County Road Commission, if anybody has any thoughts or concerns. Seeing none at this time, I guess I can turn it over to my fellow commissioners, see if there's anything they wish to discuss at this time. Commissioner Cavendish.
I guess I'll start it off. It seems like why I wanted to pull the township in is because there's at least one issue that we share, and that is the safety with these trucks coming through Wright Street, one of the busiest streets in the region. And I guess my concern, we've looked at how many trucks would be going through there, but also what's the current traffic count per day? And on Sugarloaf and Wright Street, I believe it's 18,000 vehicles that go through that intersection a day. That doesn't include any of the Kennecott trucks that go through there, it doesn't include any of the NMU waste facility trucks that would be going through there. So looking at that number alone concerns me, but then most of these trucks would outlet onto 41 and Wright, I believe it's still Wright Street, and I don't have a traffic number for that, but I believe that that intersection is the highest point of daily traffic intersection. So I guess I'm here because I see as a safety issue, I'm not here because I necessarily want to move the problem out of the city, but I'm hoping that we can have some good dialogue and, you know, keep the dialogue going. We might not get to a consensus today or really a direction, but if we can continue talking and continue bringing our groups together, because safety issues don't know boundaries. I travel in the township jurisdiction on those streets all the time, as do township residents coming into the city. So I really feel like for the residents, that's why I'm here, in both the township and the city.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavendish. And with that, while we're at Sugarloaf and Wright Street at this time, I'd like to have Northern for representative. If you could take the floor, identify yourself, and address any thoughts and concerns you have on this issue.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Arquisha, and I'm the senior associate vice president for administration at Northern Michigan University. And first off, I want to thank the bodies, the government bodies, for getting together. I think this roomful of very intelligent people can collectively come up with a program that'll address this issue. From Northern's perspective, you need to know that we are an economic driver in the community. We are supportive of the Kennecott operations. Who wouldn't be? It's a really good problem. I think Don Ryan mentioned this at one of the last meetings I was at. There are many communities that would fight for a problem like this, deal with it. But from our perspective, it's a safety issue. Our students cross that street, that intersection, to and from classes at the Jacobity Center. There are over 2,000 resident students who live along Wright Street, and that amount of extra truck traffic coming through that community is something that we need to be very cognizant of. The university's focus is on safety, and we will do what we can to help solve the problem. But you need to know that we'll stand with you, Commissioner Cavendish. Safety for students is our number one priority. And we're open to discussion, we're open to be a part of the solution where we can, but we'll do everything in our power to stop the truck traffic from coming through that intersection without some improvements there. So let us be a part of the solution. We know we're a part of the problem as well. And for the record, our trucks will be, for the heating plant, will add at peak times five to seven trucks a day. That's a long way away from 100 trucks a day. We realize we're adding traffic to that intersection. And thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing that we're at Wright Street and Sugarloaf area, we're going to be headed west into Marquette Township. Dennis, would you like to address any issues, thoughts on that?
Sure. Appreciate you guys inviting us to have a seat at the table as we open up to the discussion first and foremost. We were a little concerned seeing some discussions taking place, and we hadn't sat down yet, so we wanted to make sure that I can be involved in the discussion. I appreciate Commissioner Cavendish's thoughts about safety and shared with us, so it's clearly, the last traffic cone I saw was more like 3,000 or 4,000 cars a day on US-41 Wright Street, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, it's somewhere around there, it is the busiest corridor in the UP. And we looked at some of what was discussed as far as a Forestville bypass option for Rio Tinto trucks. Our biggest concern is knowing that the city had considered rewriting their trucking ordinances to move trucks out of the city. Our concern is that we don't want to see all trucks that were already coming through. You had log trucks, egg crate trucks, it is an established truck route. The folks who built or bought along there knew it was a truck route when they built or bought. And yeah, adding 100 trucks a day certainly adds to that mix, but trying to push that out through Forestville, in that effect, what it does is move the road maybe a half mile at most to the west, still into the busiest corridor in the UP. There's already some safety concerns there. So as a township, we have some very serious concerns about how pushing those down a half mile. Our biggest concern are making sure that the north-south route, McCallan Avenue, I think has been identified as a city north-south truck route, that that remains a viable option for trucks going south or going east that are coming down from the truck route of County Road 550, and not that they're going to start peeling out and go through another bypass option, then take a left and head back into the corridor, because in effect, we would end up putting more vehicles into the busiest corridor in the UP, and that would increase our safety concerns for residents and visitors alike. We have to find a solution for putting heavy commercial truck traffic somewhere, and we do have a truck route, we do support right now Rio Tinto's use of that truck route. Clearly, I think 595, y'all know we supported it, and I supported it personally, I think it was the best solution from a safety standpoint. But that solution has disappeared, it's no longer on the table, we're going to have to come up with something. And I just hope that we can come up with something that's going to work for us without adding to an already congested corridor.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Neamy.
Thank you, your honor. I agree with you, Dennis, you know, we have to work together, you know, we have a problem in the city of the trucks coming through, but it's not going to be, make any sense for us to do a corridor where we just take the problem and dump it into your midst. I guess one question I have, and I'm not sure who can answer it, but ideally, as we go west on 41, where is the best point for a bypass to come in for the township to meet your needs? We know what we want to avoid in the city, but like I said, we don't want to dump our problem into the township. You know, the township goes quite a ways west. Is there a point at 41 which would be acceptable for a bypass to come in, or ideally?
It's a, you know, that's a good question, but I think that's going to end up being a road commission question, because from our standpoint, how far can you push it west? I know Nagony Township Supervisor Bill's in the audience, and I mean, I'm sure he'll have something to say as we start to push it west and spill it on it in Nagony Township, but is there, how far can we move it west out of the corridor before it becomes less of a safety issue? I don't know. And like I said, the road commission's probably, you know, with an engineering background, is better able to answer that question than I am. And depending on, I mean, it's a pretty rugged country back there, I don't know from that standpoint, and there's certainly some river and stream crossings back there, whether that would get permitted any quicker than 595 would, to be honest with you.
You done?
Yes.
Okay. Jim Iwaniki, County Road Commission.
From a road commission standpoint, this group has got to realize that the limitation right now is the crossings of the Dead River. You have a crossing at County Road 550, you have a crossing at Forestville, and you've got a crossing at 510. And again, those are the current options of crossing the Dead River in the area. Those are kind of the limiters and the constrict points. And again, why does traffic come to where it does right now? Is because County Road 550 is the paved route. That's where trucks come down, that's where they cross the Dead River, and that's where they enter the City of Marquette. So again, that's the controlling factor. Now, is there other things that could be permitted? I don't know. 595 was not permitted. Okay, so again, in those discussions, you have to consider that. Do I have an ideal place where they should enter 41? No, those haven't been studied. I don't have a specific point. Okay? But again, you've got to consider that, and again, that, you know you've got to go against that permitting process if you come up with anything significantly new, and that will be probably a two-year timeframe at a minimum, and that's if the EPA is agreeable to the solution, and then if not, then it's an Army Corps of Engineers process on top of that.
One question for you, Jim, is that 510 bridge, is that compatible with heavy industrial truck traffic?
It was built just like the one on 550 was. It was built to the current standards that were in place at the time, and yes, it can handle the truck traffic and the loading of the truck traffic.
Okay, thank you. While we're on US-41 West, we're headed towards Nagony Township. If I could ask Bill Carlson, he's the supervisor of Nagony Township, your thoughts or concerns on this issue?
Well, we haven't taken any official status on the 510 route, but we had looked at it, and the upper end of the 510, which has that hairpin curve, pretty much ruled it out as being a north-south route. And there's a lot of other wetland activity that would have to be addressed up in the north end there that would be just as difficult as 595.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Stonehouse?
We've been talking about this, and I guess to a large extent, now looking at it all traffic issue. And I don't think it really is a traffic issue, I think it's a safety issue. And I think we need to be very cognizant of that. It's a safety issue for the time those trucks have found township, and bringing them down to 550 and into Marquette Township, and then through the City of Marquette, back into Marquette Township, back to the busiest corridor in the upper peninsula, on the way, rolling through, obviously, Nagony Township, and et cetera, et cetera. That's a safety issue all the way. And to think that you can safely do that with 100 trucks a day, 365 days a year, for 70 years, is, in my view, ludicrous. So what we really need to be looking at is how do we address the safety issues up? Because I think as Commissioner Neamy said, simply taking the Marquette issue of running down Wright Street, et cetera, and pushing that out to Marquette Township, doesn't really do the problem, because it just pushes that safety issue on to somebody else, and even perhaps even to worse situation. So what we really need to be looking about is how do we reset this whole thing and go back to the beginning and say, how do we safely, is it our problem or is it Kennecott's problem? It's their mine, it's their product, they have to get it to the mill, we don't have to get it to the mill. Make sense? So Kennecott, really, I think the ball should be right back in their court in terms of how they want to transport this product. But again, it's not an issue that we should be pushing on to anybody else. It's exasperated in the City of Marquette with the traffic density and how everything comes together. But it's not an issue that we can solve alone, it's also not an issue we should be pushing on to somebody else, I'd say in my opinion. You have to figure out how to do it.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Commissioner LaRue?
There's been some talk about moving it over to Brickyard Road, and to me, that would just be kicking that can a little bit farther down the road. You'd be coming up on Brickyard, taking a right, you go into an incline, where the trucks have to gear down, gear enough to get, it'd be a slower pace going over the hill from the Wright Street, because the Wright Street, they have the flat spot by Lowe's and that, take a run for the hill. Here, you're starting at the bottom of the hill at Brickyard, so we're not, we're just adding more traffic, backing it up farther. So I don't think Brickyard is our solution, as, you know, it's been thrown out there. I think that's, there'll be another problem, just moving it down another couple of tiers, maybe, you know, but I don't think, I think we should take that off of the plan.
Thank you, Township Commissioner Pete LaRue. Commissioner Ryan?
Well, I think, you know, even within each of our groups, we certainly have different opinions, and I don't share Commissioner Stonehouse's opinion. I, you know, I think the mine will make a major contribution to Marquette County, I think it provides tax revenue for the county, and we're all residents of the county as well as the City of Marquette. I think it provides business benefits for businesses throughout the county, I think it provides employment opportunities, you know, and, you know, I think we have to work some way through this problem so that we can see that operation go forward and still deal with the kind of issues we are here today. I think Dennis really put it in a lot of perspective, and I appreciate that, because it really demonstrates why we have to have a regional approach to this whole issue. Your concerns about what the city might do really rang a bell with me. And so, you know, we can't just independently make decisions and not consider what our, what our, what the effects will be on our neighbors. You know, I supported County Road 595, not just because it got the trucks out of Marquette, but because it got the trucks out of this whole area. And I think a lot of people felt the same way about that. I'm certainly concerned about what happens in the township as well, because the township, you know, they're our neighbors, we work together, we play together, we shop together, we do everything together, you know. The only people who care about that border are the, you know, the people sitting in government. Everybody else, they cross it thousands of times a day, so it's going to take a regional approach, an answer that works for everybody if there is an answer, and I'm not sure how we get there. But I think you've really, you know, illustrated some key points that it can't just be something that one jurisdiction decides, because it has to work for everybody, if there is another answer out there. You know, when you come right down to it, you know, we can sit here all day, but it sounds like, you know, the only possible answers are some variation of the Forestville road, or County Road 510, or fix up what we have. Now, if somebody has another option, I don't know what it would be.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Kline?
Yes, thank you. I would like to make a comment. There's really four partners to this: the city, the township, Northern, and Rio Tinto. Rio Tinto, there's no disputing the value of the mine, et cetera, but Rio Tinto is basically, they're not sitting at this table. They have, when they came here, wanted to establish a quote "model project." This is their initial, from the ground up, "we're doing this, we want to be great." I think they've fallen down considerably in not having, after seven years, an alternate plan for County Road 595 possibly not being permitted, than to just say, "Well, we're going to go through 510, 550, through the city, through the township, through the worst, most congested areas possible." And they have provided, as of now, no plan, no help, no, "let's be partners with you." And in terms of this being a model project, I think the future model project, if this is an example, they're going to have a hard time convincing other communities that they're environmentally responsible and safety responsible. They have, Don mentioned one altern, there are no other alternatives. There is another alternative, which I have not been part of the discussion, other than hearing it's too expensive, that's a railroad shipping of the ore. Well, we as representatives, elected representatives here, represent the people who, whose environment are being impacted considerably, just as much as frogs and plants at the small acreage that the EPA felt they needed to protect, and apparently don't seem to concern themselves with the safety and environment of the people in Marquette Township and the City of Marquette. And it concerns me, if you do the research and look at Rio Tinto's worldwide mining history, they have always provided a vastly detailed plan for transportation of the ore from the source to where they want to have it processed or shipped. And there is no program, there is no plan. Seven years, and there is no plan, and they're not sitting here, and they're not being helpful. And the only helpful hint I've had from Rio Tinto is to say, "We'll help you with government grants." To me, that's uninsulted on behalf of all the residents. This is awful, and we're all in the same boat. We can't tell, we have to deal with our little problem in Marquette, Marquette Township has to deal with their problem, but we're getting no help, no understanding, no plan. This is a mess, and I'm very distressed by that, and I hope everyone would be. And it does not seem to be a solvable problem without considerable assistance, or a company who says, "We want this to be a model plan," to say, "Well, it's just too expensive to send it by rail, too bad, we're going to just pollute your environment, screw up your traffic, make everybody on Wright Street, 550, who live there, very unhappy. Goodbye, we don't care." Thank you very much. And that's not very helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner Kline. Commissioner Debbie Palom?
Yeah, I have to respond to that a little bit, because that's kind of not true. We've spent five years, and I've been on this transportation committee for a good three years, looking at the 595 road, knowing that if we couldn't get the 595 road in, the alternative was the existing roads, because of the other issues with the Dead River basin crossings, with Dead River crossings. So they'd have to use existing roads. So to say that Rio Tinto hasn't been involved, to say that we have not tried to get an alternative done, is true to that, because we worked our tail ends off on this, Rio Tinto worked hard on this, the Road Commission, Jim Iwaniki especially, worked very hard on this 595 road. We always knew, if you came to, you had a representative at the transportation panel meetings, if you, if he came back to and reported to you, we always knew that if 595 failed, the alternatives were the existing roads. It is a truck route. I believe there was federal funds to help build that truck route. So that's where we came out of this to begin with, and we're back to that now, the existing roads is what I perceive is what's going to have to be used, unless someone else comes up with a different plan. But it's unfortunate that, you know, some people that are here today weren't as strong a voice as they should have been on the 595 road.
Commissioner LaRue?
Was Rio Tinto invited to this meeting?
Matt's here.
Oh, there he is, I didn't see him.
Did you want to ask Matt Johnson anything after?
No, I just want to know, I, I know how I felt when the meetings started and the Marquette Township was not invited, I thought that was the biggest thing, but I didn't see Matt come in, so. Commissioner Michael Cohen said, "Oh, we're at Rio Tinto," I didn't see him.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kambenzi?
I think my main purpose in requesting a meeting between everyone here was to see if we can get everyone to the table to be willing to talk about it. I think we're all here. Regardless of the outcome, it's my hope that perhaps we can form kind of a regional trucking, transportation group that could meet once in a while as we work through this. I think it's important that we all know what each other's talking about, we're all in the same playing field. We, we can't do this alone. Like Don said, the city can't decide what we're doing and not communicate with the township. And I think the Road Commission plays a vital role. I'm glad to see the counties here, although I do agree that, you know, they don't really have a role right now. It's really between the township and, and us. And as far as I know, there is no funding. There's, there's no magical answer out there. So what it comes down to is, how can we work together through this and come up with the best solution? I don't think there's a perfect one, but that was my goal with this meeting, is to bring us all to the table on equal footing. And now let's see if we can keep meeting like this, not as whole bodies, but certainly as representatives coming together to work on a common solution. So that was, that was truly my hope in requesting a meeting like this today.
Commissioner Ryan?
I was just, just going to throw in, based on my prior, prior experience, there's no way to build a railroad to Humble without, it's, it's, it's worse than building a road. It would be more challenging than, than building County Road 595. I don't say that to defend anybody, but it's just to throw a fact on the table. You'd be five years building that railroad, if in fact you could ever build it.
Commissioner Schneider?
Sure. I'd like to echo some of Commissioner Kambenzi's concerns. You know, it's amazing, our citizens really have no care where they live, other than the property tax bill that they pay. Other than that, they're all in the same community, and we're sitting here like three neighbors who are saying, you know, "This is, this is my yard, this is your yard," and we're kind of trying to, historically have been kind of pushing it off into others, and I'm hoping that we can find a way past that. Unfortunately, right now, Rio is, is the big, big fish that we're trying to deal with, but I really think that's a small issue in the long run. And if we get caught up on exactly how we're going to be dealing with the hundred trucks that Rio is going to be putting in on our roads here fairly immediately, fairly soon, in political timeframe, we're losing sight of a bigger picture, which is, there's potentially more mines out there, there's always going to be logging out there, and there's going to be a lot of truck traffic coming through. And I think it's a much broader conversation about long-term safety and long-term transportation than it is this issue right now. I think because of the immediacy, we're getting really kind of caught up in, what do we have to do now? And, you know, it would be nice if we could figure something out, but the situation that we're in doesn't lend itself to a very quick answer. So, you know, I definitely concur with Commissioner Kambenzi. If we can have, you know, a smaller group of this meet on a regular basis to discuss where, where trucks will be going ten, fifteen, thirty years out from now, hopefully, none of the future elected commissioners are ever going to have to be dealing with this issue again, because we can lay it out.
Thank you, Commissioner Schneider. Commissioner Ryan?
I just want to say I agree with Jason, except I wouldn't wait ten years. You know, I, I, hopefully, we could start dealing with the issue now, too, but I, I think the idea that this is more than just Rio Tinto trucks. And we have, we have, we have Cleveland Cliffs trucks, we have logging trucks, we have a lot of things going on. If there's a better answer for dealing with all of that traffic in Marquette County, and particularly in this part of Marquette County, that's what really makes sense. It can't just be a solution for this one mining operation. It's got to, hopefully, that fits into it, but it's the whole picture.
Thank you. And not to throw the Marquette County Chairman Jerry Corkin under the bus, but could you address the total Marquette County Commissioners' take on this? They want to stay out of this completely?
Well, if you can find some better answers between the township and the city, I guess you will support. Anything that's reasonable, I don't see anything that jumps out at me as being, as being an answer, but maybe there is something that'll work better. But we put all our efforts in 595, and it's pretty obvious now why we did. Everybody talks about safety. Well, yeah, that was, that was a big issue, but when the EPA made their decision, they said in their written documentation that safety didn't matter. We don't make our decisions on safety, so that, that's where we're at. And if you read the, you know, the transcript of what they provided, in my opinion, it was pathetic as to the reasons they gave overall for not allowing 595. So it's unfortunate, everybody talks about the logging trucks and gravel trucks and the mine trucks, while 595 would have taken care of a lot of that problem. So I guess, as Mr. Palo said, I guess I'm a little disappointed that there wasn't a fuller effort by a lot of parties to really push the 595, so we didn't end up here.
Of all the meetings I attended involving 595, it seems to me there was an awful large crowd there, and I thought it was close to fifty-fifty as far as opinions went. Fifty percent for it, fifty percent against it, so I don't know how more you could ask for support than of all the comments that were made over the last couple of years. And, and I know that both factions were very vocal in what they thought 595 should have been built and why, and the ones that were against it. So I think you could have been as vocal as you wanted to be, but it's, it still was out of our hands. Decision was still out of the city, or out of the state of Michigan, and it was in District Five out of Illinois. So whatever they decided, we had to live with. Commissioner Kambenzi?
Can I ask Randy and Bill, I guess, what, you know, if, if we're all willing to kind of work together here, and a few of us from each jurisdiction are willing to come to the table, I guess, how do you see that coming together, or what would that look like, or do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I guess I can start that off. I do have some thoughts on it, you know, and I'm, I'm here in kind of an unusual position. I'm the Marquette Township manager, I'm a resident of the city, and a former county commissioner. And, you know, so I'm looking at it from a different, different look, and those of you that know me know that I'm not rationalizing my opinion. And I do have a strong opinion on it. As Commissioner Palo mentioned, I've been a part of the Transportation Advisory Committee since it started. All of the jurisdictions and all of the interested parties were represented on that committee. We all took a unified position regarding 595, supporting it. And outside of that committee, that didn't happen. So my opinion is, and I'll throw it out right now, I have an opinion that there is a solution. We have, we have, we've had several issues that you can raise, safety issues, transportation issues. Another issue, where's the traffic going? From the standpoint of moving through the township and through the city, we've got trucks that are moving south and east, trucks that are moving west and south. They need to be advised somehow, there needs to be a road free show. Township has no problem, as far as my board discussion, township has no problem. Those trucks that need to be in Marquette Township going through Marquette Township, those that are going west and south, those that are going south and east, need to go through the city of Marquette. There needs to be two routes, that's my opinion.
I would, of course, see to what the group would do, but the, I, in, in my experience, I'm from the area, I was the only one from my family to leave, so when I came back, for me, it was a unique experience, because I got to see a chance of thirty years of growth in the area that hadn't existed when I was a kid. So, so life for me ended at Pizza Hut, and, and all of that growth that you see with that corridor, moving, moving west, is largely new. So I can look at the area still with some fresh eyes and see that, that contrast there. And I, I've had a lot of discussions with a lot of people in the room, and what strikes me today, and, and what, what struck me, as I was kind of doing the forensic reading to see all the different times that this group had all sat down and tried to solve this before, but it is a safety issue, it is a traffic issue, it's a management issue, but it's really a success issue about growth. And, and so for me, when, when you look at the area, if you look at any other city that, in surrounding region, that has a university, has major medical facilities, has the seat of government, has all of the natural resource industries we have, has all the manufacturing industries we have, has everything else we have, the way they manage traffic is quite different than what we're trying to do here. They don't run it through all the congested areas, they run it around all the congested areas. And of course, those solutions don't come overnight, they're long-term solutions, but they're the kind of things that, if you imagine everything that the township is trying to do to be successful, you're going to see more growth in the township. If you look at the kind of things that the city's trying to do, you're going to see more growth in the city. You're going to see more growth in the Gani Township. Bill's going to get his residential area, right? Randy will probably end up getting Forever Twenty-One and maybe Victoria Secret. We're, we're going to see more growth in the city, too. And so the, the problem, even if we, even if we look at it, to me, like what it's, like what as an area we've been looking at, is that, you know, we get to these points without that long-term plan, where there's a negotiation of, you know, based on some type of short-term impact. And the, the groups are willing to make compromises, but very small ones, because with a short term that doesn't have an end, it's not really a short term. It's just one set of compromises after another. And so, you know, in listening to, to some of my commissioners, in listening to some of the commissioners that I've met with through, through the past years, you know, the issue can't continually be finding some short-term set of compromises that we're going to make with no end. We won't get to a solution that everybody's ever going to be happy with that way. And so for me, the outcome I was hoping would play part of this, just me personally, was kind of what was forwarded by Commissioner Schneider, was there needs to be a longer-term view, because we might be willing to make compromises in the short term, knowing that we're going to have a long-term solution that everybody can agree on. But if we really don't focus on solving this as neighbors for our area in a long-term way, it's going to be one, one continued set of meetings like this. And so I would hope, we have the, we have the organizations, we have the traffic manager quarters, Jim's been managing the, the particular issue associated with managing traffic. You know, as a result of the 595 flow, we have representatives on it, all of us. To me, that would be probably the right form to continue meeting. Now that the road's now here, it's kind of reset, to my thinking, ultimately, where we need to maybe sit down as a group and discuss, really, you know, what are the short-term options we're going to take based on the longer-term view of solving it. And a lot of, a lot of the dialogue today sees that, but if you look at Ann Arbor, it's got a big circle around it. If you look at Grand Rapids, it's got a circle around it. If you look at Big Rapids, it's got a circle around it. I'm picking those towns, because those are college towns, just like us. And the idea of driving all of this traffic through the heart of Ann Arbor, or the heart of East Lansing, right, or, or the heart of central Michigan, would be as abhorrent to them, I'm sure, as it is abhorrent to New York. So at some point, as they were successful and they grew, they struggled with this issue, they took a long-term view, and they figured out some kind of a way to manage this, knowing that they grew, right? That, that, not just kind of stepping in. So my sense is, we have the group, we have the structure, we have the leaders, we have the opportunity to use that to find that long-term solution, and that should inform, hopefully, what we're willing to do in the short term until we get there.
Thank you. Commissioner Amy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I've been kind of following on what Bill was saying, and Commissioner Kambenzi is, makes a good point that we, we do need to do this on a regional basis, but there is a, an existing group, the 41 corridor group, that is kind of parochial to the corridor itself, without the, the impacts of the outline areas that they feed in. But perhaps that, that would be a, a, a group that could be expanded, they, they look more at the technical aspects of the corridor itself and US 41, but it is an existing one. I think all jurisdictions do participate in it already. Perhaps that, you know, that's been going on for a number of years, perhaps it should be expanded, or, or perhaps just we, as, as the, as the, the parents of that group need to, to charge it to, to do what we want it to do.
Thank you, Commissioner Linda. Linda, go ahead.
I've got two questions, I guess. Marquette proper has been a mining community for, I don't know how many, a hundred years, two hundred years? We're doing, if we're not doing trees, we're doing minerals, or, or, you know, we're a port. This is nothing new, really, other than maybe the volume. I'm curious, two things that maybe the commission could answer. What, what was your intent in 2009, when you designated McClellan to be a commercial truck route? And two, if, if there is to be some kind of a bypass, who do you expect is going to pay for that? If, whether it comes through the city, or around Forestville, or out as far as the Gani Township? How, how would that get paid for if, if nobody has money? Is it, is it your intent to just go off for grants, have us partner? I'm concerned also about the grade coming off of Brickyard Road, or somewhere up in that area, and trying to turn. I mean, I don't see that being any easier than 595, especially with all the, the bridge crossings. So I guess I'm looking for what you see, I mean, you've got two things right there that you focused on, where do you see that going?
Well, according to Rio Tinto, they were going to be very supportive of helping the city and more than likely township. I know they're going to support the Marquette County Road Commission on all of the county roads, leading up and into Marquette Township, and from 510 to 550, right up to the city limits. That's where the mining company is going to help fund through grants, or whatever else they're going to offer. With some of the other issues that you have, I'm not an engineer, but if I could ask Keith Whittington, I, from City Engineering, I don't want to throw you under the bus, but do you have anything that you could address as far as, a couple of questions, if you want her, Linda, to repeat that? As far as...
Sure, I'll give it a shot, go ahead.
Well, I'm just, excuse me, if 595 was such a big issue with all the mitigating that had to be done, and funding, and Jim said that going back behind Forestville, behind maybe NNN Trucking, back that direction, coming out Gani Township to the west of Marquette Township, how is that going to be any better? Other than, I know there's a lot of mitigating that wouldn't have to be done, because it's different. The Conifer Swamp of 595 was totally different than what's back here, but how is that better, or easier, or more difficult?
I think safety is the big, big issue moment. Mitigation, yes, it might be similar, but there's probably more mitigation that was required in 595, there's probably more responsibility to that issue. As far as grants, you know, there are grants out there. Is there enough grants to cover all that? Probably not. So I guess that's where policy decision makers look at Rio Tinto, as far as coming up with. Maybe apply with them to help subsidize Rio Tinto costs.
About the McClellan Street, I mean, that was...
That is a designated truck route. That was designated in 1970, to start from south by the ski hill to Wright Street. And most of the trucks that are coming through, some use it, some are going west, and some are going south, so they'll... So you'll see the trucks coming down Prescott Isle over there, and head itself towards Shire's Hills. Maybe a couple of other questions, I don't know if Matt Johnson would like to take the floor at this time to address a couple of your concerns, but if you'd like to ask him anything, and he wants to participate, that's up to him. Matt, you, did you want to address anything, or?
I'm William Massey. I live on Wright Street.
Yes, sir.
I've been there four years.
Bill.
Can I speak yet?
Just a minute. No, not yet for public comment. This is for representatives of the city, county, and you'll get your time in a little bit, Bill. I know where you live, I get your communications. Go ahead, Matt.
I hope Rio Tinto is representative.
I'm open to answering any questions, anyone.
Go ahead.
Dan Bompel, by the way, trustee. I just wanted to say that it's obvious that we all know there's a problem. I don't think that's too hard to fathom here, but I think the solutions that we're going to come up with, just, to me, obviously, the 595 issue's done. The bypass around, to me, just purely for funding sake, to me, would not work at all, considering the fact that even as a trucker, if I had to take that road, I don't think I'd be too happy. There's a lot of curves, and hills, and stuff like that, also. And as Mr. Aronike said, it'd be over two years of getting permitting, so Rio Tinto's going to be trucking at less than that cost. So obviously, the problem is at hand, and we have to solve it. I agree with C. Manjavi that compromise is a big thing here. And the only solution I see here, and actually not even a solution, but the only viable option is going to be the 550 route. I don't think there's any other way around this at this point in time. I think maybe as a group, we should discuss it and make sure that we know exactly how that route will be handled, and the best way to do it safely. I agree with Northerns wholeheartedly, that is a very bad intersection. Suppose we should start looking at exactly what we can do to that intersection to make it a little bit safer. As Dennis said, I don't think Township knows, has always had that truck route going up Wright Street, or down the 41, we always know it's been there. The additional traffic there is not going to make us very happy, but we really don't have another option for that. Hopefully, the safety issue's going to take care of itself by speed limits or whatever. I know those trucks going out on 41, having to make that run up towards the Gani is not going to be an easy route. You can see it right now going through there, that you put two trucks together there, and you're backing up traffic pretty good. There's a lot of left-hand passing there, and it's to be expected. I think it's something that's always been going on. So the addition of extra trucks is not going to make it, it'll make it a little more difficult, but it's not going to make it completely impossible. I agree with the east, with Randy, that McClellan is a good viable for the east-south route, and as well as Wright Street's a good viable for the west.
Okay, thank you. Pete?
To follow up on Nick's there comment about long-range planning, I would like to know, I always, you know, I've heard that the minerals are for big-bait delons. If we're looking at long range, where we put that road, should we find somewhere along that stretch that's going to work? That's why I was in favor of 595. Maybe Don Ryan or Matt could tell us, you know, where the minerals are in the future. Where are we looking about more mining, and where the trucks got to go from A point A to point B? Because we can solve it from here, where Rio Tinto is done, and then we're going to move the problem up, or west a little bit, and then we're going to have another problem. So it'll be kind of interesting. I always figure, I knew, but I didn't know.
I just want to make it clear, I have no idea where the minerals are. Except for the Empire and Tilden Mine.
Well, maybe Matt could tell us. Is that the area? Because we're a mining community. We've always been. I mean, where would we have been, the Gani and the Ice Spring, without the mines up there, out of Marquette? So we were always told that the minerals were up in that area, you know. Is that true? Is that where we're going to have our problem in the future? I don't know.
Dan?
Matthew, Dan's all around it. You're not going to be able to avoid getting up and answering a couple. So first, it's about if they found a viable solution that was going to cost $12 to $20 million, Rio Tinto going to pay for that?
Well, what we've committed, just for everyone's background knowledge, my name's Matt Johnson, the manager of external affairs for the Blue Lend to Eagle Mine. I've been working on the project for about four and a half years, and since that time, probably on transportation issues. And County Road 595, originally the Woodland Road project that we spent nearly $20 million in six years trying to permit, we weren't successful in the end. So we went back to our original plan that's always been in our permits, and that is transporting down existing roads. 595 was the alternative to our transportation route. What we have committed to local use of government, to the city and meetings that we've had with the city over the last several months, is that we would use our resources in Lansing and in Washington DC to acquire potential sources of funding. Right now, the US Congress is looking at designating rural freight routes throughout the country. Those are opportunities, I think, for Marquette County, and the city, and the townships. Those discussions go on as we speak. Of course, none of that would really be all that beneficial unless there's some type of plan and planning that takes place in the local government. And that's why I think some of the discussions here today have been really positive, because there was some type of work, we were looking at long-range planning. But that's, so that's only part of the problem. Long-range planning, I think, has to happen under any scenario, whether Rio Tinto is here or not here. Traffic is increasing in Marquette County for many different reasons. I think that's a good thing, but it also means that local use of government have to have a plan for that increase in traffic. The short-term planning has to do with existing routes. We've always said that we're open to come to meetings and look for solutions, and help look for solutions, and be part of that discussion.
Matt, a follow-up question. You know, you guys have got some top-dollar engineers. Clearly, you've looked at all the alternate routes all around. 595 wasn't an attractive option, you had an existing truck route if it didn't work. But you've also looked at a number of options throughout your planning phase, and people have asked about 510, also pushing it out more towards Peshawki Grade, and you're, as we talked about, an ore body that extends all the way out to Launce. So I know you guys have had to look for those options. Is there anything in particular that you can share with this group, why it's not a viable option?
Oh, sure. It's probably been a year and a half since we saw now. There is a picture, story in the front page of the mining journal that showed many of the alternative routes that we had looked at. One of the requirements in our permitting, both in Woodland Road and the county tried to permit County Road 595, was to rule out alternatives, prudent and feasible alternatives. That included rail, included the Peshawki Grade, included the Red Road, 510. So we spent many years looking at many of these routes to see if they were prudent or feasible. We can go in details later on, if you wish, on why some of the roads weren't really feasible. I believe that it's, that many of that, much of that information is outlined in the permit application and the front page of the mining journal over the years.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt, for addressing those issues.
No, no, I just wanted to note it's nine o'clock. Time check.
Okay. With that, Commissioner Benzi?
Just one last thing. I think we do have the short-term solution, and that is, you know, the current route that's there, but I know the city of Marquette is looking at it at truck ordinance, I mean. So what we do and plan, we're basic, and that's where, in the short term, I think we still need to sit down at the table and work together. Long-term, I think Matt's right, we all need to come up with a long-term plan. It's going to be ever-changing, it's going to be moving as things come and go, ideas come and go, mines come and go, but if all of us can commit to working together on this, having good communication, being transparent, and being open, I think that's what's going to really make our long-term plan a better solution, whatever that is. We don't know what it is yet, but...
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Well, and I agree, we should focus on the long-term plan, but I thought Randy threw out a short-term solution, and I guess we just kind of glossed over it. I'm not sure why we did that, and I assume he must have been speaking, why shouldn't he? I presume he was speaking for his staff, but he basically said, as I recall, that the Rio Tinto trucks could go through Marquette Township. As long as there were some, you know, it didn't become a general road for all the truck traffic coming from the north, is that right?
No, I'm not speaking for the county board. The question was directed to me, for my opinion, my opinion that I was giving. There's been several discussions, the council member Needy, as well as Councilman Ken Benzi, has indicated that another group might be feasible. There is another group already, Transportation Advisory Committee, already exists, already has representation from not only political parties that are sitting here, but trucking interests, as well as the loggers and the other companies that are involved in this as well. There's one group that hasn't been talked to, property owners that were talking about crossing their land. They've not been involved in any of these discussions. Corporately owned and privately owned. My knowledge, none of them have been included in this discussion.
What about the point of your suggestion that there may be a loop?
Probably, I mean, my point, my point is simply that, you know, the trucks are going to specific locations. Some are going south and east, makes no sense for them to come out west to Marquette Township, and then come back through the corridor. I think my board has spoken to that, but that's a safety issue. Thirty-four to 36,000 cars a day go through that corridor. You know, Councilman Ken Benzi is concerned about the 18,000 after one intersection by the university, and understanding the university's concern as well. But that's half of what we have going through our intersection. So, you know, safety for us is paramount as well, always has been. You know, our township has invested money, roads we don't own, to provide an alternative to reduce the traffic under the road. I don't see my board or my community being interested in expanding that traffic. So, you know, an alternative is necessary, but the Transportation Advisory Group, and again, the Road Commission basically sponsors those meetings, is a group that already exists, that already has numbers. Each of the political bodies appointed one or more of their members to have a speaking role, which has not been the case, that committee, we could get a lot further down the road with Lieutenant Benzi.
Okay, thank you. Before I open this up to public comment, I'm going to check in with the Market County Commission. Anything further you'd like to address before I turn it over to public? Debbie?
I just think that Randy hits it on the head when he says there is a transportation committee out there, and if, and some of the problem was, though, like you said, that you weren't the speaking voice for your board, you know? We had county commissioners, and I sat on it for the county commissioner, and Jerry was involved as well, and we knew that from at least 90% of the board members, not all of them, it wasn't unanimous, that we knew what they wanted, we knew their wishes, and so we could go there with our ideas, knowing that we would have, they would have our backs when it came to a vote, because it does no good to sit there for days and days and hours and hours, and spend all these months on this, and then not have the support of your board behind you. So you need to send people that have the support of the board to help make the decisions to move the process forward. And that was some of the problems that we ran into with the Transportation Committee in the past, but that's a good place to start. And furthermore, from my point on the county board, if the Road Commission and the Township, if you're looking at changing this over to a Township or a bypass that's going to include the Townships, then you definitely have to have the support of any Township that's involved, because the Road Commission works for the Townships.
Thank you. Craig?
I'm taking two things from here that are very positive. One, I think Randy gave probably the nucleus for a viable option for the issue that we're all here for today. That's a good starting point for the two groups, the two groups being basically the city of Marquette and Marquette Township to sit down and try to talk through. It's a very good, what I would call, rational approach to the issue at hand. That's good. Obviously, the Market Township needs to look at it that way, and the city of Marquette does also. And the other part is tying into that, and that is what I heard from Sarah, Jason, and Don, basically saying that there is some agreement in terms that the Township and the city really need to sit down in a small group to get the discussion going on some viable direction on this particular issue. Bill talks about the long-term goal, and I think that's there, but there's no getting around that we have a timeframe for this particular issue. I know Northern's interested in trying to solve this particular problem. So with that, with Bill's goal of long-term in there, we still need to address the short term. No matter what happens, it's going to take cooperation between the different political entities around the city to address that issue. And in particular, as we've seen over and over and over again in the last 15 years, it usually ends up being the primary players in this, Market Township and Market City. So I would really like to see those two groups saying, yes, let's sit down, let's go ahead and try to work out a workable solution on this.
Thank you. Chairman, Mr. Corkin?
Yes, I want to think, I hope that you can find some ways to solve the immediate problem. I don't see a lot of options. I think that you're probably going to have to work with the existing roads that are there and try to make sense out of it with cooperation between the Township and the city. But from the way I see it, I think you're going to, they're going to end up using the existing roads, and that's what's permitted, and they made a full effort to do 595, they spent a lot of money, so we can't say that they weren't committed to finding a solution, but EPA had different ideas. So that's, I guess, in listening to everybody, I think we're going to have to work with the existing roads.
Okay, thank you. Scott Urbish, did you have anything you wanted to?
Nothing more than what my board has already said.
Okay, I just seen you there, I wanted to give you a chance to have the floor. And with that, I'll move to Market Township. Any further thoughts or comments, concerns?
Sure, Johnny. Bill, I like what you had to say about long-term solution. We do have to have a long-term planning, and I think that unfortunately, for a lot of, including around the corridor, had we spent more time in the past looking at long-term planning, the traffic probably could have been a little bit better there. But we can't go back, we've got to make sure that we get it right as we move forward. I think the Transportation Advisory Committee is a great place for that discussion to take place, Deb had said. The short-term solution, Market Township does support the idea of the existing truck route for Westbound trucks coming through. Is it the best solution to have 100 extra trucks come through to that corridor, out of the Walmart-Tarver intersection, and taking a right heading west? Maybe not, but it is a solution that exists, you know, it's been there, will support the rightful Rio Tinto trucks, or any of the other aggregated logging trucks to continue to use that route. I think that, you know, it's tougher for the city, because I understand that Northern has certainly some concerns with the student body there, and I know the intersection well, and as an alumnus of that, I knew, clearly I get that importance, but I think that maybe there can be some improvements made to that intersection to help with some of that traffic. I don't know what those are, but I don't have an engineering background either, and I, and you know, that's a big solution with a lot of kids and a lot of vehicles at the intersection. But we're going to have to find a viable route through. Right now, you know, again, we're looking at seven years. I think, trustee Laverue brought up the point, there's a lot of ore bodies out there, and it's not just seven years, it's just going to be long-term, so we do have to look at it long-term. What's that look like right now, the funding? I mean, even if you looked at the Forestville option of a route through there, you know, maybe $12 million to move it a half mile farther down the road. $12 million, I'd have a hard time looking at residents of the community and saying, we got the funding from somewhere else, from the state, from the feds, we're putting $12 million into a road that moves trucks a half mile, when just drive through the potholes. We have this string, I think residents would say they'd much rather see the $12 million put in right now and fixing the roads we have. Michigan's got bad roads, that's going to be, but I appreciate you guys giving us the opportunity to sit down. I think Jason and Sarah, Don, I mean, they're right, we need to keep working together to keep talking about a regional solution as we move forward. We're going to get bigger, not smaller. We're going to have more issues like this, not less. Thanks for the opportunity, Charlie.
Thank you. Market Township Board members?
Ernie Johnson, sure, you're certainly listening to it, and coming down to it, they're both short and long-term. Short-term, we really don't have any alternative. We've really come down to it. There, it's going to happen, they're going to be hauling, not only them, we don't know what the future's going to bring. So as your manager indicated about down in Lansing, down in Kalamazoo, and that, that's all fine and good. They're able to make the bypasses, everything. Go back in time, they... Go back in time, the eight-hundred-pound gorilla is not sitting in this room. That's EPA and the DEQ. Right now, they're gonna dictate what you can or can't do. If you wanna do a roundabout through this round city Marquette, Marquette Township, look at the topo maps, what you have there. You're just not gonna do it very easily. It's gonna cost big, big dollars to do anything to that. So I hope, I don't have a solution at this point in time. The solution should have been done thirty, forty years ago, but there was no growth. Go back thirty years, and Bill said, peace of heart. I've been involved in the township now since the seventies, and I've seen the growth. And there was no thought about traffic movement back then, no concern at all. Planning commissions weren't concerned with a lot of the things that's happening now, because a lot of them didn't have any background. I know when I came up here in sixty-nine, I went to a planning commission meeting and asked them about, oh, what would you call it, turnoffs and that, into the different areas, and they didn't even know what I was talking about. I came to Minneapolis, lived in Chicago, Detroit, Pontiac, so I was familiar with that. But right now, there is no short-term, there's no long-term to do it, it's all short-term. Until you come up with something, you have to live with what you've got. Until you get EPA and DEQ in this room telling you what you can or can't do, I don't care what you come up with, they're gonna dictate where that's gonna be. Because I think Commissioner Coyne came up very, very well when he was talking about the frogs and different things like that, they're more concerned with that than the safety of people. Until you get that overcome, they're not gonna make it.
Okay, thank you. Danny Pompel, you got anything?
No.
Linda?
Um, the other thing we have to think about for long range too is getting local people off the corridor. Manager Gerard's been saying that for a long time, and I think that's been a big part of Marquette Township's focus with our limited funding on roads, and we've got a millage in place now, we'll probably try to keep it so that we can keep track of our own roads. But have the city look at any of the rest of those connectors back in the Trow Bridge area or wherever we are behind, you know, we've got Grove Street, we redid Brookton Road. I think that has a big help with the traffic flow. And I think going forward, if that can be, maybe this, maybe that's what this ends up being about, not worrying about one road that everybody goes down, because then you're beating up one area. We've got multiple ways of getting through this community, just kinda let them go where they need to go and address each corner, each intersection with improvements or some of the, make our own little bypasses through Trow Bridge or behind the mall, or connect things more so that local people don't have to be on the corridor.
Thank you. Pete?
Two things. I, I think in their planning committees and that, they should start thinking about, I know it's hard to think that, fundage rules. We talked about this twenty years ago in Harvey, twenty-five years ago in Harvey, about it's happening down there, and now all of a sudden it just sprung up in the sloths. Marquette Township, just the same thing, if we had frontage rules, it would be a little bit, I think that should be part of the planning of any community. But also, what are the hours of trucking? Is there gonna be a twenty-four-hour trucking, is it sixteen-hour trucking? What is it, is it a twenty-four hours around the clock trucking? Would that be it? Matt?
Yeah. Good question. The, right now, the current mine plan would be looking at twenty-four-hour trucking. One thing that we've talked to local units of government about is not transporting during high-traffic flows. So during school bus pickup times, during our thirty-minute rush hours, eight o'clock and five o'clock during the day. So we certainly have some flexibility. Also, having the flexibility of doing a twenty-four-hour operation also relieves traffic during the day and also decreases interactions between trucks and trucks, whether it's our trucks or, or other trucks using the road. For example, our estimated traffic on Wright Street would be two to four percent of the traffic coming in here. On the forty-one corridor, it's one percent of the traffic. So we're a relatively small user compared to everybody else, but as Commissioner Stonehouse has pointed out to me in the past, is what's, what's the comparison of truck to car, not truck to truck? And then the percentages, you know, sort of greater. So we'd be looking at, you know, certainly getting involved at the, you know, at a level that's consistent with what our use of the road is.
Thank you, Pete. With that, I'll go to Nagani Township Supervisor, Bill Carlson, anything? Jim Iwaniki? Any of your board members?
Your support, what you both come up with.
Okay.
I had a question for Randy. Are you keeping track with the percentage increase on forty-one?
Through the Road Commission.
Yeah.
Well, I thought maybe you, yeah, we're the Road Commission, that's MDOT's responsibility.
It is, yeah. US Steel wants MDOT responsibility, but we work pretty closely with Jim on our projections and our developments, our planner, talked with Jim quite a bit in terms of development that's coming in. But the township has been doing, you know, all through this discussion, we've been talking about township efforts to reduce traffic. We're trying to move, you know, we're building new facilities, we're building those north of the highway, north of the mall, trying to move the center of Marquette Township away from the US corridor.
I was gonna say, you gotta keep in mind, because years ago, we, it used to be like a five percent increase every year on that corridor between Holiday Inn and where Best Buy is right now. That's one of the busiest corridors in the U.P. And if you're looking at a five percent increase, you're looking at seventeen hundred vehicles every year added to the traffic that's already there.
Our growth rate over the last fifteen years has been seven percent.
Jim?
Again, I, I think the city and the township has things in place right now with their planning departments and commissions that deal with these things. These are community-wide issue, and again, from a road commission standpoint, we're here to support those community-wide issues, and we're not going to be the driving force on this particular project, but when there's a plan to be worked on, we'll be there to work on it.
Thank you. With that, I'll move to Marquette City Commissioners, Commissioner Ryan?
You know, it's kind of interesting that, as you look at the problem, you know, that the answer to the city's problem is in the township. You know, and that's what's kind of made this unfortunate, because every time we talk about it, it kind of looks like we're saying, let's just dump the problem in the township. And that's not really what I wanna do, or I, I don't think anybody else does. But, but, you know, if we're gonna have a long-term solution, you know, the road is not gonna be within the city, it's gonna be within Marquette Township. So hopefully, you know, we can find a way, and again, I think early on Dennis hit on, on some key points, that there are things we can do together to make it better for everybody, and I think that's something we have to do. The other thing is, you know, if we're gonna have a long-term solution, is there a way we can leverage this situation? Can we turn it into something positive? If we wanna have the kind of bypass road that the city manager, Bill Vida, pointed out, you know, can we use this opportunity to get grants from the federal government, the state government, Rio Tinto, or anybody else to come up with that kind of benefit? You know, this, this could be an opportunity if we, if we take advantage of it. And I guess I'll just say it once more, you know, when I, when I defend mining, people say, well, you worked in mining, you know? Well, yeah, I did, I worked in mining ten years ago. And I worked in television too, I worked in the, I was a life insurance agent, I did a lot of different things. My support of mining is not because I once worked there. My support is because I see the economic benefits it brings to our area. You know, and there's the old saying, you can't have your cake and eat it too. And that's kind of where I'm coming from on this issue. There are tremendous economic benefits that are gonna flow into this county, whether it's taxes to Marquette County. And again, I would point out, city of Marquette residents are also county residents. There are people in our community working at this mine and will be working, there are economic benefits for our business. So we have to find a way to work with this company to make it work for everybody. You know, it's not just their responsibility, it's not just ours. But I, you know, if we wanna, if we wanna reap the benefits, then we have to find a way to make it work, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Ken Benzey?
I'd just like to echo what Don said, and that is that, I mean, we need to form, you know, some partnerships, whether we're working on our individual truck ordinance or whatever, it is gonna affect the surrounding townships. And so I'm, I'm adamant that we have positive relationships and that communication is open. And I'd just like to thank all of the representatives that did come here, Ishprameen Township, Nagani Township, Marquette Township, Marquette County Road Commission, the Marquette County Commissioners, as well as Northern and Matt Johnson from Kennecott, because it does really say a lot that we're all here in this room willing to listen to each other and willing to, you know, hopefully work together in the future. So I just, I'd like to thank everyone for coming and being candid, because everything should be on the table, and whether we wanna hear it or not, or you wanna hear it or not, the best decisions come from being open and transparent. So thank you to everyone.
Commissioner Schneider?
One, one suggestion, trustee Linda Rant brought up in the discussion about alternate connections. This might be an opportunity for our independent planning commission to work together on joint development ordinance and joint development of connections on future planning. We have numerous connections between the city and the township. We've got Wright Street, we've got Fair Avenue, we've got Grove Street. Both of us have weight restrictions on Grove Street, that might be an alternative to look at. There are a number of those connections that possibly the two planning commissions working together with the Transportation Advisory Committee might be able to look at.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Sure. You know, we're, we're kind of in this unfortunate bind of having to come up with something short-term with 595 being turned down, and I think we're all looking at the same thing and trying to figure out the safety aspect of it. But I don't want us to, to lose sight of the long-term opportunities that are afforded to us to find a, a way through this by just trying to solve the, the short-term situation. You know, we'll figure out our own safety issues as quickly as possible. But I think that this is a really good point for us to be able to move forward and figure out how to deal with long-term traffic. We've all talked about the ore body that's gonna be there for, you know, until it's completely exploited and exhausted, which could be twenty, it could be a hundred and twenty years. So I'm looking forward to those future dialogues. I appreciate that everybody has come, particularly because I think that we're running into an underlying issue that we're gonna have to be dealing with more and more, I think, over the next few years, which is, up until recently, we've all, as municipalities and county, we've all kind of operated as separate silos of communities. We actually haven't, I don't think we've really integrated as much as our citizens have. You know, our citizens cross those, those boundaries in a very permeable way, but the governments don't. And I think that this is a really good step on being able to, to have this many bodies in the room and being able to talk, because it's gonna keep hitting us on much larger issues than transportation in the future. So I'm hoping we can use this as a, kind of a jumping off point for, for further open communications between municipalities.
Thank you. Commissioner Neamy?
Thank you. I guess I'd like to just echo what my previous commissioner said, and I'd like my support that we need towards the end of the future and we seek joint solution to our problems.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
I agree. However, right now, we have a critical problem, and I would like to have Rio Tinto sit at this table and make some positive contributions and provide township, Northern, city with a transportation plan specifically and a mechanism of being helpful rather than just saying, this is what we're gonna do, too bad, we don't care. They need to step up.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Oh, started talking about safety, I'll harp on that again, there's gonna be thirty-six thousand five hundred vehicles a year going down the US corridor. And I forgot the comments you made about a five percent growth, but certainly that's gonna exceed that manyfold. So we are going to see significant safety issues in Marquette Township, Tower Township, city of Marquette, all the way through Woodland, finally ends up in Humboldt. I am very concerned with how we manage those issues, I'm very concerned in how we protect citizens for everybody, because it's not a city of Marquette, it is everybody. And I think I just encompassed a lot of the county. So I would be very curious how the county road commission will sit at the table and help us figure out what those safety issues should be, so it's consistent all the way through from mining operation to the final milling operation. It's a package, and we can't address that individually differently. We have to have a common approach to it. So I think that's a great opportunity for all of us to work together. The opportunity for long-range planning is very consistent and very important, everybody's talked about that. But what would, how would you imagine if we had a loop road that went around the city of Marquette, kind of around Marquette Township and dumped in coming down Big Bay? Imagine the development opportunities that could be there in five years or ten years or twenty years? If we use this thing as an opportunity to get better, to do some things that they've done downstate with some of the cities that Bill mentioned, that can be advantage to all of us. Where the money comes from right now is immaterial. We work on the plan, find the grant money, we get it done. We eventually will get it done. And as Dennis mentioned, there's more ore bodies out there, we know this problem is not gonna go away. I love the idea that Randy came up with, where we do a little tighter integration with the planning commissions, and we should be doing that, because we joined. You know, there's not a magic fence there. Somehow we need to figure out how we make that, that transition much, much smoother than it has been. So this really is a great opportunity for all of us, if we take advantage of it and go forward with it. But I'll go right on back to the safety issues. And I'll go right on back to the fact that I do not believe we even have a file truck product yet, do we, of what we're gonna be hauling on?
With the design of the trucks?
Yes.
The request for proposal to go out, but as we talked before, the platform would be very similar to the trucks you see on the road today, except it'll be side doors.
Okay, but we, do we have a tonnage, should we have a wood for axle wheel? I mean, those things, I think, are still in transition. So, again, safety is just gonna, my mind is bottled that a company with a worldwide reputation that Rio Tinto had is in this kind of a mess and has produced it for the community that it's in, it's just staggering. Nothing further, Mr. Neamy. Thank you for the opportunity. And thank everybody.
Commissioner Stonehouse? Thank you. I'll turn this over to Anna Muirap. Do you have anything you'd like to?
Yes, thank you, thank you, ma'am. I think we have achieved a consensus on safety being an issue. But I can tell you that as a part of our enrollment package that we offer students that run Michigan University, part of the Northern National Environment, having haul trucks run through campus in front of our residential area is not considered a positive in that scenario. We need to understand the economic impact that the university has in this area. Our students create a volume of nearly fifty million dollars worth of spending in this area. That helps build your township, that helps pay the taxes in the city, it helps a lot of local businesses survive. If this continues to, to happen in front of our university, our enrollment will likely be affected by that. That's gonna affect everybody in this world. So I encourage you, please, keep us in the discussion, keep us a part of the solution finding team. And I'm, I'm really concerned about those in the room who have said, oh, well, let's use existing routes. And, and more concerned that now perhaps we're gonna run through the night too. So if we're not crossing during the day, when you're trying to cross that street or use that intersection, we'll, we'll run past your residence halls and your sleeping area. That's not acceptable to the university. So help us be a part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Johnson, anything further?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. Again, as we've said for many, many years, from our very first meeting we had with the city in two thousand and eight, we are willing to work with you, willing to look at the safety issues. I think everyone knows by now that is one of Rio Tinto's, one of our value is safety. It's proven by our safety record that we have at our operations worldwide, we need industry in it. And any additional information that we can have from engineering and planning and existing city roads, you know, I met a few weeks ago, we talked about what are the mitigation points for safety on sugar loads? One of those could be moving the sidewalk from one side to the other, so Northern students that will have to cross in front of, not just our trucks, but many more trucks that are actually using the road today, you know, trucks are using the road today. So this should be a concern today, not just with Rio Tinto as an operation. So there's intersection designs that could be looked at. So we look forward to working with city engineers to see what the, what traffic the road can handle, what traffic the road can't handle. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I'll turn this over to Randy Gerard, I'll give you the floor.
I have nothing more, sir.
Okay, thank you. City manager, Phil Vida?
Only we have public comment coming up.
Right. I, I see the ones in attendance are in their chair wiggling, getting ready to do their three-minute stint, so public comment at this time, I'll open it to public comment, and should be limited to three minutes per person. Mr. Pompel?
It's kinda hard to take three minutes when you folks have had a chance to rat on and on and on about the long-term proposition. It really is an immediate problem, and I figure you probably have a year to solve it between your groups with our powers we have or don't have. between your groups with our powers we have or don't have, and Rio Tinto has a real need that we don't have. And I think it's up to them to step up and handle it, and they haven't done it as yet. This is my view. I think that all parties involved here, no matter where you're from or what jurisdiction, is certainly going to bear something, some kind of a problem they don't intend on bearing or don't wish to bear. So that's a fact of life. There are, however, alternatives to what have been said that I believe have not been fully explored or explained to anybody in particular. I think that, first of all, there are a number of alternates available going through Forestville, either through the Norrie Salvage yard or the We Energy Hall Road that runs east and west from the road tracks, the old Snyder Mill, and it goes, connects up with Forestville. However, Marquette Township isn't happy with that, because that dumps a lot of people into the Marquette 41 corridor. And I understand that. But that is an alternative that could be done, it could be accomplished quite soon. I think we have probably a year to get something done. So, and I'm sure that knowing something about businesspeople, two different businesses with different uses or needs, will get together if the dollars are right, and they'll solve things together. We Energy, I'm sure, would share that road with, as a haul road for the reattentive trucks or for log trucks to bypass the city of Marquette. And I'm sure a meeting of the minds could be made very soon if they just got together. I wonder if they've ever been introduced to each other. Another alternative is, of course, 510.
One minute, sir. One minute.
I'll try. I think that you should hear this, never mind, there are people involved here, not just political people. A 510 could be improved, I think, in an easy way, a relatively easy way, I should say, and that would get your trucks out of the 41 corridor. And they could also go across to 480, because the road, I think, that goes across south to 480, and they could go then east and west if they like, or head south, which would be also another thing that Marquette Township is concerned about. Another thought is that I think, I've not heard said at all, Rio Tinto could do a combination thing, a truck haul and a rail haul. There's a reasonably decent road that could be improved.
20 seconds left, sir.
All downhill, that goes down to Lots, or it could cross over to the railroad track that ends up at Herman and Astoria. And a loading situation down there would take care of that, and rail would never be, it could be nighttime haul one time a day after they were loaded out. So I think that...
Thank you, sir. You have three minutes, Arlo.
Mr. Coyne is right. Rio Tinto has not stepped up.
Anyone else wishing to address the...
My name is Mike Beck, I'm a resident of the city of Marquette. I'm glad that all of the respective bodies have come together to talk about moving forward on this trucking issue and looking forward to future growth in the county. I think it's a little unfortunate that it disappears that there's a 25th-hour decisions being made here to try to obstruct this process that needs to move forward with getting the trucks moved through in the most expeditious manner through the existing route that's been identified. Kennicott announced in January of 2011 that they were going to use the existing route that was there. Market County Roads Commission accepted two or $3 million in the summer of last year to develop the AAA portion of the route from Michigan Department of Transportation. So I think the plan is moving forward to move the trucks through the city. I hope that the city moves from today forward to look at those safety issues that are going to be approaching very soon here, and to look at the safety issues at Northern, along McClellan, past the Child Care Center, Shopko, the intersections out to 41, to look at those safety issues, to consider public safety, not just commercial trucking interests or concerns of the powers that be that need to move the trucks, but public safety, because this is something that we're all concerned about as residents, I'm concerned as a resident of the community. These future long-term plans where you can move a new bypass route through other parts of the county or through the township, perhaps in the long view, this can be developed. If you look at the history of Woodland Road, Marquette County compelled the Roads Commission to find an agency that was, or develop the Woodland Road Limited Partnership to pay for that road. So perhaps in the long view, there could be an economic development interest to develop a bypass. But as now, as it stands now, public safety needs to get addressed, the city needs to look at public safety. This long view of the alternates is great, hopefully that you can find a positive solution to that. But I believe that it stands now, this is going to be a reduction of truck traffic.
One minute left, sir.
Thank you.
You've got one minute.
Oh, one minute left, okay. So correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that this trucking plan for Kennicott is going to be a reduction of truck traffic that we've seen through construction. So from 200 trucks a day to less, I don't know if that's correct or not, but I think the city can handle the truck traffic through the city, I think the township can handle the truck traffic through the township. Don't neglect to look at public safety, and I hope that moving forward from today on, that the agencies can collectively work for public safety, and the city can look at those existing issues of public safety on the identified truck route on McClellan leading out to Fort Worth.
15 seconds left, sir.
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address this?
How about let me speak here?
Yes, you.
Forget it all.
You've got three minutes.
I live on Wright Street. I'll tell you something.
Could you stand up so the camera can see you?
I'm way back, I live on Wright Street.
Face the cameras over there a little bit.
What do I got to do, look at the camera?
Okay. Your time starts.
Anyway, I've lived there 40 years. They say how many, I can look out the window, I bet there's 40 thousand. Rio Tinto, when they get them going, I hope I'm up Wright Street by the way, I don't want to move, but it will be chaos. You can envision driving into LA or any big city, you're not going to move. The city just fixed Wright Street. It was four lanes with Bondo trucks. It was hell, man. I'm a 10-year veteran, I almost got killed out there cleaning snow. Send me to Afghanistan or Iraq, I would be safer. And then they improved the road. The city did a wonderful job improving and doing McClellan, improving Wright Street with a turn lane. Can you envision added trucks with JB Hunt? And they raised the speed limit to 35, there's all kinds of people that live on Wright Street. Even at 35, it's going to be a steady stream of trucks. Big Bay Road would be the same thing, I don't know how you're going to get back and forth. And they're going to run all night? I wonder if I can sleep roaming through 24 hours a day? It's insanity. I can't understand how the EPA, how you can't go, I sent information, Representative Benetek, and said, please, I mean, can't we as a group or a thing go down there and change these people's minds and send 21 miles versus 60-something miles through a residential area and business? And they're going to fix Northern? Are you kidding? How are they going to fix that intersection? There's no room there. And I could see with Northern, somebody is going to get run over. All for Rio Tinto, they've got lots of money. Use that billions you've got, you're going to get from the mine, and put a road somewhere around. You can do it. Don't come down through town. If they do, I just hope and pray I'm up Wright Street, it'll be, I feel sorry.
One minute, sir.
Thank you very much.
You've got a minute left.
I don't even know what else. Just say, I just say it's insanity, have the trucks go through.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commissioner at this time? Go ahead.
Well, we've been around the block here how many times with Woodland Road, the 595 road, and now we're talking about a bypass road. And I know, I brought this up several times while I was on the county board at EPA hearings, DEQ hearings, and at Kennicott, Rio Tinto's original haul road was to come from Big Bay down to north, someplace north of Marquette. It was to be put on rail and shipped off to Sudbury. Obviously, that changed when they bought and are refurbishing the Humboldt mill. Fact still remains is that even though they're talking about taking trucks, however they get there, and they're going to take it by truck, according to the plan right now, the Humboldt mill, but when it leaves there, it's going to leave there on railroad cars. And it's going to come east down through Marquette and go off to Canada, as I understand. I still don't understand why they cannot take, and I don't accept this, it costs too much. The only rail option that I've seen, and if there is another rail option, coming out of Marquette, the only rail option I've ever heard them talk about was going from the mine over to Humboldt. That wasn't in the original plan. I still don't understand why we cannot have that brought to a place north of Marquette and then railed to Humboldt, and then railed from Humboldt back out and going to Canada where their final destination is. I think that long-range planning and that is important. I think that all of these little things have been, our growth and development have been solved on short-term basis, and usually it's always because of...
One minute, sir.
And it's the same thing now, whether it's a bypass or whatever, it's all coming down to money, and it's a short-term type fix. For their 1% to 2% traffic that they're going to take, if it's causing this much concern, look at the rail option from Marquette out to Humboldt. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the representatives here? Anyone else wishing to address the representatives here? Seeing none at this time, I want to thank everybody for attending this meeting. I think it was very educational. And with that, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.